It's three o'clock on Friday, February 28, 2025. We are in the mayor, Bill Coppeta Executive Boardroom, on the first floor of 45 Garden Road, Manning Tower, Brockton, Mass. 02301. This is the special session of the board of directors. This is the public hearing, and all are invited to attend in person or on Zoom. Also included in our agenda is the hearing of visitors section. Please note that all the board meetings are recorded. This this meeting has been posted on the website, and we are in compliance with the 48-hour notice. I am now calling a roll for quorum. Timothy J. Sullivan Chair is here. Ernest Pettiford Vice Chair is sick and isn't in the hospital. Member Janet Artest?
Here.
Treasurer Cal Roberts?
Here.
Assistant Treasurer Taylor Harris?
Here.
We have a quorum. All of our meetings are held on the last Thursday of the month unless there's a special. Some of our members are present and some are on Zoom. Because of that, all of our votes are done by roll. I'm going to read off the COVID-19 pandemic memo. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and state of emergency on March 12, 2020, Governor Baker issued an executive order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30, Section 30A pursuant to the General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20. Pursuant to the order, public orders are temporarily relieved from the open meeting laws requirement that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public, so long as measures are taken to ensure proper access to the party's deliberations through adequate and alternative means. That was extended to April 1, 2021, extended again to April 1, 2022, extended again to July 1, 2022, extended again to July 15, 2022, extended again to March 31, 2023 by Governor Baker, and extended again to March 31, 2025 by Governor Haley. You are hereby given notice that the members of the Brockton Housing Authority are called to meet in the special session on Friday, February 28, 2025 at 3:00 p.m. in the Mayor Bill Coppeta Executive Boardroom, Manning Tower, 45 Garden Road, First Floor, Brockton, Mass. 02301. This meeting slash hearing of the Brockton Housing Authority will be held in person at the location provided on this notice. Members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and off-participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting slash hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. The public is invited to view and or listen to the meeting via phone, computer, laptop, or tablet. To do so, download the Zoom Cloud Meeting App at any app store or at www.zoom.us at 3:00 p.m. on February 28, 2025. Click on and join a meeting and enter meeting ID number 833-0570-9360. Passcode 111023, or use the link http://zoom.us/j/83305709360. You may also join by calling the conference line at 1-646-558-8656 at 3:00 on Friday, February 28, 2025, and enter the meeting ID number 833-05709360. Passcode 111023, followed by the pound sign. The board chair will instruct participants on appropriate time and manner for public comment during this meeting. If we could all please rise, if you can, and remove your hats for the pledge of allegiance and silent shift of cell phones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask.
Here.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Chairman?
Here. Item two, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 23, 2025, and the special meeting of January 28, 2025. Item A in your packets. Can I jump in for one second on that? I just wanted to thank everybody for showing up for that meeting real close. We had, it was only a week into the way we had the second meeting. And I wanted to say that that's the, in 26 years, that's only the first time that's happened. And I did miss one day, so I'm not 100% sure, but I'm 99% sure that it hasn't happened before. And I just wanted to thank everybody for quickly coming and getting in on that meeting. Plus, we broke a record. That meeting was over in 15 minutes. And item A in your packets, Mr. Tebow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I echo that. Thank you very much. The approval of the board and the availability is very important as we move through. So such, some good times and some tumultuous times. I have reviewed the minutes, and I found them to be in order. I would recommend that they be approved as written.
We need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris and by Commissioner Janet Artest. Motion is to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January 23, 2025, and the special meeting of January 28, 2025, as written. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask. Commissioner Trask, you're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item three, hearing of visitors. Any member of the public is invited to speak before the board. Visitors wishing to be heard must sign in with their name, address, and contact number before the start of the meeting. Each visitor will be allowed three minutes to speak on each subject. The board will take any issues under advisement and respond at a later date. Total time for hearing of visitors will be limited to 15 minutes, which will be strictly enforced. There will be no passing yard three minutes to another. All visitors can be heard on agenda items only. Is there any hearing of visitors?
Mr. Chairman, no one has signed in.
Hearing none. We'll move to item four, correspondence. Mr. Tebow?
There is no correspondence in this month's package.
Makes it easy. Moving on to item five, approval of the bills for the special meeting of February 28, 2025. Commissioner Roberts?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the billing, had a few questions. Everything was answered just satisfactorily. And I make a motion to accept the bill as they are.
We need a second. Item five?
So moved.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve the bills for the special meeting of February 28, 2025, as presented. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Item six, approval of fiscal year 2024 year-end financial statements, exhibit C in your packet. Mr. Tebow?
This is the item that we actually had sent to the board members coming in by Zoom via email yesterday. I think we sent it to all the board members via email, and you have the packet here today. I apologize for this, and actually, we have a meeting next week with the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and we're going to lobby them to change this process. At the end of each year, the board, because of what happened in Chelsea, has to sign off on certain things. One is that they receive the financials, two, that they know what the top five people are being paid, three, that the, we do the lead paint that was supposed to. We received these last night. It is a system that is fraught. So what we will do in March, we will give you a complete review of last year's financials once we get a chance to review them. Our fee accountant has reviewed these. They are in good order, as we know. Our auditors will come in on May 12, and they will take a look at them. They will go through them, and if there are any changes, they'll make those changes and include them in an audit report. The only purpose of today is to say that you received them. And if you know of any crime going on, or hanky-panky, I'll call it, that you tell the auditors about it. But that's what this is about. It's really not the financial reports of the end of the year and going through it in any manner, because to be quite honest with you, Mr. Pachus hasn't had enough time to review them all in detail. I haven't had enough time to review them all in detail. But it's to meet this arbitrary date set by Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. That, this is going on all over the state. I spoke to our fee accountant, Mike Gada, this morning. He has already communicated this to the state. We will communicate it again next week. So the recommendation is, the recommended action is to certify the compliance so that we can push a button, and we'll go into them, and it will begin the audit purpose, procedure. So our, Michael and his staff has done their work, including Allison, who's in the room. Our fee accountants have now done their work and put it into the system. We then put it into the system, and it begins going through an audit. And again, they can challenge the way we've classified something or that. But this is done every year. The difference is since what happened in Chelsea, they involved the board to sign on.
So when the board signs off, we're not, I mean, they know we don't have extra time to read all these.
They know.
We're just signing off that we received it.
You received it, and, so I used to, remember, this started when Commissioner Aziaf was here, and he was quite right and said, I don't know that these numbers are right. I didn't put them together. They're just a bunch of numbers. So even if you're an accountant and you understood everything on here, you might say, well, that's the numbers. They're saying they're right. That's what the auditors will do. So what you're saying is you've received them, and that, let's say, you knew that I had a side business and I was sending money out to a side business, and you knew it, or you were involved in it. Then you couldn't sign that. We know of nothing like that. That's something, we have systems set up. We have a fee accountant that comes in on a monthly basis to make sure. We have all sorts of systems in our finance department where we have dual systems and that. So yes, basically, that you received them.
There is one little crime, small. The coffee machine doesn't work.
We have to.
It's got to be replaced. I hope I'm not the only one drinking coffee.
I think you are over here.
Somebody else must drink coffee.
We'll get that replaced, because we do use the room quite a bit, and we'll be using it more.
We need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Item six?
Second.
What today?
Busy people.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. The motion is to approve the
Yeah, that's correct.
The motion is to approve the certificate of completion with notification procedures for federal and state-led paint policy laws. The top five compensation forms, and on behalf of the Brockton Housing Authority, we certify under the pains and penalties of perjury that the facts and information provided in attached year-end financial statements and tenant accounts receivable application data for the following programs, 400-1, 689-1, 689-2, and MRVP for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2024, are true, correct, and complete to the best of our knowledge, and that the statements fairly and accurately represent the financial condition of the developments and the Brockton Housing Authority for this period. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. And just so everybody knows, we're signing that we received this. We're not we're not looking at the accuracy at this thing. And we don't know.
Mr. Pachus is actually going to take these, now that you voted, he's going to take the certifications and run to his office to make sure they're done by the end of today.
Are you coming back, Mike?
We'll see how this goes. Hopefully, the state websites are working like they should.
Okay. Item seven, acceptance of resignation resignation of Patricia Mullins, homeownership leasing agent, exhibit D in your packet. Mr. Tebow?
Patricia is a fairly short-term employee, although she is at her retirement age in the rental assistance department. She has been a good team member, and we hate to see her go. But she, she's actually at retirement, and she has a very elderly mother that she's taking care of.
Sorry to see her go. We need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
You might be giving Carol a chance. They're quick.
Okay.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Artest. Motion is to accept with regret the resignation of Patricia Mullins, homeownership leasing agent effective February 28, 2025, which is today. Any questions or discussion on the vote? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item nine, approval of state capital improvement fund administrative fee. Item eight, sorry.
You just gave a woman a heart attack.
Sorry. When I put that on the committee, it's like covered up the eighth. Item eight, appointment of accountant, exhibit E in your packets. Mr. Tebow?
If I could ask Mr. Plouffe to speak on this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Members of the board, with the advent of our Campello project, which is going to be hugely complicated, I wish Mr. Pachus hadn't left, because he did this in Medford. And he is trying to explain to us how much financial data we're going to have to produce over the next three months for this project and over the next five years for the rest of the phases of this for the investors and the, to be able to come in and invest with confidence for their low-income housing tax credits. So we have a employee who's been with the housing authority for a number of years. Started out as a clerk in the rent collections department, then moved up to finance department aide, taking on more responsibilities. And now, and during that whole time, went to school while raising a family, having two children, got her associates at Massasoia then accounting, and then went on to get her bachelor's in accounting from Southern New Hampshire University. So Allison Joyce of Brockton has educated herself in accounting, been working for us, and is really ready to step into this new world. Even without this new position, she's been one of Mr. Pachus's go-to people. I think she helped the treasurer today with the bills. So we recommend the interview committee founder very competent and ready to step in.
If I could just add on to that, it's always wonderful to see our employees grow. And Mrs. Joyce has done that. She's made efforts. She's, you know, with two small children doing homework at night. She's taken on a lot of responsibility. As you know, when Mr. Pachus left, things were pretty tough to curvy here, and she was one of the people who helped us navigate through that period. She's a young woman, and I, and I hope she has a long career here at the housing authority and serve us well and can raise her family and send them to college and all the things in the future.
Did you tell Allison right now?
Allison, I say this.
Glad to meet you. Hang on, it's like we're going to vote on it.
Good for you, Allison.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Plus, I'm glad to see you're a Brockton person.
You could walk to work. I told you, you know, or ride a bike.
We need a motion in a second. Item eight?
So moved.
Second.
I don't got that one. He was quiet. Taylor, was that you for the second?
Yep.
Mr. Pachus made it back to throw in his two cents on how great this is.
Yeah, I've been completely happy with her work over the past few years. You know, everything that I've given her, she's been able to eat it up and spit it right out into a very efficient and great format. So she'll definitely be a huge success here.
Mike, with her here, will we keep you longer?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm going to be here for quite a long time.
Okay, good to hear.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Is there any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Did I give the recommended motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, you didn't.
No.
No.
Let me step back and give the recommendation motion. Motion to appoint Allison Joyce of Brockton Mass. to the position of accountant effective March 3, 2025, at the step-one rate of $73,162 per annum. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Come on up and kick that again.
Thank you so much. Yeah, I do. Yeah, we're seeing each other. Oh, of course.
Congratulations.
I got a memo to read off, but there's somebody else being hired as well, so I'll read it off of both at the same time. Item nine, approval of state capital improvement funds administrative fee, exhibit F in your packets. Mr. Tebow?
Now, this is just the state, on the federal side, when we spend capital money, they allow us to take 10% for administration, which is a fairly low amount, you know? 10 to 15% is the norm. On the state job, oftentimes, they're asking us to do it for nothing, and it costs money. So we're paying for state work from other monies. And so what we've been, what has been recommended is that boards, and this is being done across the state, adopt a policy that says for any state work, capital work, we will charge 10% administrative fee unless the board decides different. So the board could say, hey, for this job, we'll do 8%, we think that's better, or 12% because of whatever special reasons. But as a matter of everyday work, just like on the federal side, we will do 10%.
We need a motion in a second. Item nine?
So moved.
Second.
Second?
Yeah, second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is that the board of commissioners adopt a blanket policy stating that the Brockton Housing Authority will charge a 10% administrative fee on any approved capital work done in our state projects unless another amount is expressly stated and approved for that specific project only. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, approval of contract extensions, marketing and public relations services, exhibit G in your packet. Mr. Tebow?
Oftentimes, when we issue contracts, we put in the language that we can extend it for one or two years, in one-year segments, if we're happy with the work that they're doing and if they're willing to keep the same price. We are very happy with the work that Petro Advertising has been doing, they've been working with us. But I think we had signed the original contract, Mr. Chairman, over at the Douglas House. But, yeah, the Douglas House, we had a meeting over there one night, 25 years ago. So this allows us to go one more year, at which time we will have to get out the job. I would recommend it strongly.
Where is the Douglas House?
Right over on Hable Street. There's the Douglas House, and then there's the Hamilton Way. We were at the smaller one. We're in the basement. I remember Ernie being there, so you must have been there, because you came on before Ernie, right?
Same time.
Same time?
Yeah. I just forgot where it was.
Yeah.
We need a motion in a second. Item 10?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Artest. Motion that the agreement entered into on March 1, 2020, with the terror advertising for marketing and public relations services to be extended for 12 months ending February 28, 2026. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
He's an oldie but a goodie.
Nice guy. Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Item 11, award of contract, mobility plan for Section 8 program, exhibit H in your packets. Mr. Tebow?
If I could ask Mr. Plouffe to speak on this?
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Members of the board, we were awarded a grant by HUD for $60,000 to do a mobility plan for our Section 8 participants. And what this plan is, is how do we use our Section 8 vouchers to help our participants move to better neighborhoods? Because if you move to a better neighborhood, you have better schools, you have less crime. The children will now grow up to have a greater chance of success in life. And there are places throughout the country that have been doing this. Chicago does it. Parts of California do it. So we put out an RFP, looking for experts in the field. We found one. They scored very well by everybody in the scoring committee. Their bid was for $50,000, which left us a little bit of money for our person who will be working with them in the Section 8 department. And this is to prepare a plan. We have to send the plan to HUD. We have to send them an update by the middle of June, and then the plan to them by November. Whether anybody will still be at HUD is another story, but that's our obligation under the grant. So I would ask the board to authorize the executive director to sign this contract.
Tom, could you say who's on that committee?
To, it was myself, Runa, Chris Lane Barney, who's the director of the Section 8 department, and Karen Patchoulis, who is the who is the landlord participant facilitator, and Jen Monahan, who is new to the section eight, and we thought we'd broaden her a little bit.
Big crowd on that one.
Well, it's part of it was for the expertise of the people, and part of it was to give others more expertise.
And they all thought this was a good project?
Yes. They all, everybody scored them.
Okay. We need a motion in a second. Item eleven.
So moved?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion that the executive director is authorized on behalf of the Brockton Housing Authority to enter into an agreement with Mobility Works Incorporated of Baltimore, Maryland in accordance with the price proposal attached with the maximum contract amount of fifty thousand dollars for the contract period. Any questions or discussions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you. Item twelve, approval of amendment number three, construction manager at risk, D M A R contract, exhibit I in your packet. Mr. Tebow.
I would ask that Mr. Barry to speak on that.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Good afternoon, board members. And this is our third and hopefully final amendment to the Schamit C M A R contract for pre-construction. We're hoping to get to our final gross maximum price and get ready for construction to begin. They're asking again for a not to exceed amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars for a twenty-two week period from January second, two thousand and twenty-five to June sixth of two thousand and twenty-five for the pre-construction procedures at Camp. We'd make, recommend to make a motion to approve ten three to Schamit Design Construction for a twenty-two week duration for pre-construction services with a not to exceed amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars for the Campello High Rise Section eighteen project.
One question, Chris.
Yep.
It just, does this seem normal that we've already paid them a couple of times?
Yes, because we, we started off, if you look, we started off back in twenty-two. And we're, we're doing one phase. We were doing a renovation actually back then. And then we changed to new construction, so it shifted everything, which increased their pre-construction time. And now we've made multiple changes into phases as opposed to one contract as well. So now we're actually going to be starting, hopefully, as everything goes well, fairly shortly. So we're now going out to bid. Before, it's just been reviewing the drawings and, and telling, you know, getting pricing. Now we're actually going out to bid with contractors to get firm.
And this will be the final time of the pre-construction?
That would be my assumption, yes.
Okay.
And we're happy with Schamit?
Yes.
We've been very happy with Schamit.
Yes.
They've been very responsive. We've, we've really crushed them on deadlines, you know, during the holiday season. We were saying, you know, they were saying, well, some of our people leave for Christmas, we said, that's not our problem. But not quite, but they, they worked through it and they have been very responsive. They have a lot of effort into this game also. They, they, they are with partner one, you know, they're walking along with us.
Yeah, there's, these numbers don't actually, I, I don't believe they actually cover their, all of their costs.
No.
So.
And this is, is this some of the tweaking and some of the design?
Major changes. We hired them for renovation. We changed to new construction. We changed from new construction one phase to three. Those are two, two major changes.
Okay.
We need a motion in a second. Item twelve.
So moved.
Carol got that one.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to approve amendment number three to the Schamit Design and Construction for a twenty twenty-two, for a twenty-two week duration for pre-construction services for a not to exceed amount of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars for the Campello High Rise Section eighteen project. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous. Item thirteen, award of contract, roof replacement project Roosevelt Heights, project twenty-four dash nine, exhibit J in your packet. Mr. Tebow.
So we do everything we can to get the exhibits to fire to the weekend. We like to have, to have you the week before the meeting. In this case, so in this board packet, there've been, there'll be three items that are different, and one was the financials, second is this one. Mr. Barry and his department open up the bids, low bidder, we do checking on, we make sure that the references are good. Mr. Barry had concerns, so he has done excessive, not excessive, a lot of due diligence on this, spoken to many people, had our architect follow-up, spoken to the Attorney General's Office to confirm that the low bidder is responsive and, what's the other word?
Responsible.
Responsible. So therefore, that's why you didn't get it. He wanted to do the additional work prior to this. So that, that's, I'll turn it over to Mr. Barry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tebow. Again, board members, on January twenty ninth, twenty, two thousand and twenty-five, capital solicited prime roofing contract for the roof replacement at Roosevelt twenty-four nine Roosevelt Heights. Then on February seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, a public phone line bid opening was held with ten bids being received ranging from nine hundred, eight hundred ninety-four thousand dollars and two million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred. After the bid opened, capital improvements in the authority's architect evaluated the bids received for completeness. Additionally, reference checks were had been conducted on apparent low bidder, Pappas Industries Incorporated, of fourteen Bowson Lane Buzzards Bay Mass, to which they have been deemed responsive and responsible with a low bid amount of eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. We would recommend to award Pappas Industries Incorporated fourteen Bowson, Bowson's Lane Buzzards Bay Mass the contract for the roof replacement for project twenty-four dash nine Roosevelt Heights roof in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars.
One question, Chris. What, how many years did that roof?
They were put on in two thousand and?
No, I think the north.
I know what they're basically for life. They're, they call them thirty-five, I think now, thirty-five years. My life.
My total.
So, yeah, it's, they're, they're at least thirty-five years.
I understand the commissioners, the chairman's question. I was there for the groundbreaking, for the what brands picking new place, right, and beautiful, and we're already replacing, we've done the windows, we're doing the roofs. It was a little while ago.
Twenty.
It's like yesterday.
Twenty-five years ago. And those were three tab shingles that are on there, which is.
Yeah, the people complained and they want chairs.
Yes, no, no, that, that place, they did.
They want everything.
Yep, well.
We need a motion in a second. Item thirteen.
So moved?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is to award a contract in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, which is the low bid to Pappas Industry Incorporated of Buzzards Bay Mass for the roof replacement project at Roosevelt Heights, project twenty-four dash nine. Can you say how many roofs are out there?
There's thirty-one, I think, and thirty-one including the garage.
And that's a total of thirty-one roofs being done over? And there's a thirty-five year guarantee on them? Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, authorization to execute grant of easement, Manning Tower, project twenty-four dash three. Exhibit K in your packet. Mr. Tebow.
Before I ask Mr. Barry to speak on this, that we do have an ongoing electrical job here at Manning Towers, and we will then go to Bel Air. Most of the work has been done in the apartments, and now we're getting to the switchgear in the basement and the transformers, and there'll be a generator outside. As a resident, I'll call myself of the building, I am very, very anxious to get the transformers out of the building. That's what happened at Brockton Hospital, the transformer caught them. There's a vault downstairs, and they will be moved outside, correct?
Yes.
And to do this, they need even, so Mr. Barry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Tebow. Yes, again, with the replacement and relocation electrical distribution system at Manning Tower, National Grid requires a new grant easement to be executed and recorded for this work. I've attached a couple of easements for review. Mr. Plough has reviewed this easement and finds it to be in proper order. With the recording of the grant easement, the Plymouth County Registry requires a board vote authorizing Mr. Tebow to sign on behalf of the authorities. We, we would recommend a motion to authorize Mr. Tebow to sign the grant easement on behalf of the authority for the new electrical distribution system at Manning Tower.
We need a motion in a second. Item fourteen.
So moved?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to authorize Thomas G. Tebow as executive director of the Brockton Housing Authority to sign the grant of easement with National Grid for a new electrical distribution system at Manning Tower, project twenty-four dash three. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow.
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you, board members.
Thank you. Item fifteen, executive director's report, exhibit L in your packet. Mr. Tebow.
I'll, I'll touch on just a couple of points. One is we are starting our, developing our standard operating procedures for tenants accounts receivable. This will be very important. This is being led by Ms. Campbell, who is working with the finance department and the tenant accounts receivable department, and the asset managers who will become involved along with the resident service coordinators. It's important that we have systems down that address these issues so that people don't get behind on their rent so far that they have no hope of ever catching up. The issues in Washington, I, I guess if I were to summarize it, your guess is as good as mine. It's not affecting the Brockton Housing Authority's day-to-day operation. I don't expect it to have any near-term effect on our operations other than the people that we deal with in HUD, in Boston and in Washington might not be there. What that means and how that slows down things, I don't know. We will, that is yet to be determined. As you probably know, many of the unions representing federal employees are suing how that comes out. I think they lost one case recently. But, you know, there, there's many, many issues that are being worked out. So. But as I say to the staff here, we have about seven thousand people that we take care of in both the rental assistance programs and public housing. That's what we will continue to do. For our people in maintenance who are continuing in, in our new potential maintenance person, things still leak and need to be fixed, and we will continue to do that. We are having a change, but since nineteen eighty-four, we've had the same accountant, Richard Conlin. Richard sold his business a couple of years ago to Markham, seeing the bills come through for Markham. Markham then was bought by C-Biz. They're, they're our new accounting firm, so the guy that is working on it, Michael Guider, is well-known to us. He's well-known to the state. I like Michael. I have a lot of confidence in him. A little bit concerned about how big C-Biz is. They're a huge international company. So we'll, we'll be monitoring that and, and moving forward. But again, the people we're dealing with have been very good.
Have they changed the protocol?
They have not. No, they're honoring the fight. So we'll see. We did go to a ceremony in Plymouth. Mr. Chairman, you were there, answered, speak to the governor. That was about the award for the Campello project. I don't know, Mr. Chairman, if you want to say anything about it?
Yes, it was a, it was a long ride in the middle of nowhere. I didn't know Plymouth was so big. It took forever to get there. But anyway, we, I, I ended up staying right beside the governor, and I asked her about this.
Remote voting.
Yeah, on Zoom, remote. And her answer to me at that time was it's in the works, and Tom Plough is saying that she had put out a an executive order with that is in there, but we just haven't heard yet. And everybody is hoping it goes through, because that's, that's on the school committee as well, Janet, the people coming in on Zoom. And she had, she has given us phase one. I didn't realize they put it into three phases. And she has given us phase one money. I don't know if there was a check involved or?
No, in fact, if I can speak to that once you're finished, I'll, I'll talk a little bit about that.
And there was eleven or twelve other housing authorities or construction companies that were awarded money as well. Her goal is to have four thousand new housing apartments in Massachusetts this year. And we had a good time. They have, they gave us coffee and pastry. No sandwich, just, just coffee and pastry. And off we went, um, every way. The only bad thing was Tom Tebow's driving. Somebody got carsick.
So I was, how much was the award? And, and the chairman said, do we get a check? You know, a lot of times they'll do a check.
The big one.
The big one, yeah. No, and I, I did not know the answer to that. So I spoke to our partner, Cambridge Housing Authority, who's been through this many times. We don't know exactly what they've given us. We have asked for forty-nine million dollars in tax credits. We've asked for a bunch of soft money from the state. We're assuming that that's what they gave us. But that could change. As we go to closing, we meet every two weeks. We had a meeting today with Mass Housing. They're the ones who will do the tax credits. And, but it is in that range, and we'll be putting things together, and, and money will come in, money will go out. They might switch things. So it's still a moving target, but what they've done is made the commitment to, to the Campello project. So that, that was very exciting, but I sat next to Councilman Castro, who asked me that question, and I just, I don't know, I haven't thrown. Which is kind of an odd situation to be in. That, that's good news. There's, as I said, there's a tremendous amount of work. Today, we are issuing a request for proposals for equity partners. So these are banks that will come in and buy the tax credits. And we're estimating they'll, they'll buy them at ninety-three cents on a dollar. They could go down eighty-nine cents. They could go up, probably not up. We think eighty-nine, ninety-three cents is a good number. And banks will come in, Bank of America, we've had, the Dortmund Capital has contacted me directly about it, a couple of people have. So we're hoping to get some good responses there. We will know within a month. As Chris, we're working on the GMP, gross maximum price with Schamit, and that has to be done by the beginning of April. That's a very important date to make. One of the problems that we're having negotiating the prices is the current turmoil in Washington. So think about it, we're putting steel and wood into it. We're putting gypsum into it. Gypsum comes from Mexico, so if, if the administration puts a twenty-five percent tariff, and that's what they were talking about, a twenty-five percent tariff, then that, that has a significant effect. It, wood comes mostly from Canada. That would be twenty-five percent. Steel has already been a tariff put on, so we, we know that will, you know, be baked in. So it is, it's a moving target at, at times. But the people we're doing, dealing with, including Mass Housing, Executive Office of Housing and Community Development. Um, but the people we're doing, dealing with, including Mass Housing, Executive Office of Housing and Community Development, uh, and, um, the, uh, Cambridge Housing Authority have done this many times through many different ups and downs, but we're confident we'll move through.
Where does steel come from, Tom?
Steel comes from all over. The United States, uh, has quite a bit of steel. Uh, Europe brings in, uh, uh, Northern Europe brings in a lot of steel. Um, you know, Norway, Finland, uh, areas like that. Uh, China, uh, does, um, you know, but, so, you know, at the steel, we were expecting, we knew that, in fact, there had been previous tariffs on steel. Uh, that, that goes up and down. And the, the issue is that the steel comes from another country, let's say it's, I don't know, a thousand dollars a ton. Uh, they put the tariff on, so it goes to a thousand two hundred fifty. And that's what the United States is, should cost for steel. So the price goes up regardless. But it's, it's, we're not, we're, it's not just happening to the Brockton Housing Authority. It's happening to everybody. If the school department starts building and redoing the high school through, through that project you're going through, you're going to run into the same, well, you can differ market, it starts next year, you know, what goes up, what goes down. Um, it's just part of the system, yeah, but the state is aware of it. We've had long discussions about it and we will, uh, we'll get our GMP in and move along.
Can I also ask, um, I haven't, unions that do sue the government for whatever reason, um, they, they're not real successful, are they?
Well, it depends on what the action, so, um, you know, if you violated civil service, uh, laws, yes, I would say that, um, the, uh, you'd be successful, but I, I don't know enough. Tom and I have spoken to it about it. Tom is a, uh, an attorney. They're saying they're firing people for cause. And that might be to their advantage. Seems exactly the opposite to me. Because a lot of people say, I don't know what the cause is. I haven't been evaluated. I never received a negative evaluation, so I don't know. I, I, I must say, when it comes to the nightly news, the national news and that, I, I, I turn it off. I just, it, every day, it
Something new.
It's something new that, uh, you know, how true it is, I don't know on either side. I just, uh, I'm gonna try to keep my world right here in Brockton and take care of the, uh, two thousand units we have here and.
So the first thing I heard is that they put an order to return to office work and a lot of people had moved far away during COVID. So them refusing to return to office was their cause.
Yes, and that may be true, uh, and what I'm worried about is, if we deal with, you know, a lot of people in HUD and you have some real stellar standout people, then you have some who aren't. I imagine that the stellar standout people will go other places. And that will really be, uh, a, a problem.
Unfortunate.
We need a motion in a second, item fifteen.
So moved.
There's a second. Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Cal Roberts. Motion is to accept the Executive Director's Report for February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five and put on file. Any discussion or questions on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Taylor, is there a time you have to leave to get back to work?
No.
Okay. Item seventeen, Appointment of Maintenance Mechanic Aid, Exhibit N in your packets, Mr. Tebow?
I could ask, uh, Mr. Plouffe to speak on this, please?
Thank you. Um, members of the board.
Did you skip sixteen?
Oh, let's do this one first.
Okay, okay.
Oh, I did skip sixteen.
Do we do this one first, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we can.
Uh, Mr. Sanchez, go. So, uh, we had the retirement of, um, Kevin Gailey. Uh, we have two other, uh, maintenance men on long-term workman's comp. We have, uh, been informed by one of those that he will be retiring at the end of this year. So we went out looking for two maintenance mechanic aides. I did an initial search, uh, on Indeed, posted there internally, uh, on the Mass Narrow website, on our website. Uh, I, I did an initial screening, then sent a number of resumes to Mr. DeChristopher. We did several rounds of interviews. Um, we did our hands-on test and our, written, yes, thank you, thank you very much, written test. And sometimes we have people tell us during the interview they can do everything, and not so much. So we, we like to test them. That was started by, uh, Mr. Hines and it's served us, uh, served us very well. Um, after the results of the test came in and the interviews, Jose Galvano, who is not here today, I, I don't know if it was my mix-up, um, in, in the time, I, I had Mr. Sanchez, he showed up here at two today. So I, I'm not sure if that was my mix-up or what it was. I haven't, I haven't.
Well, we hired them both today?
Uh, yes, yes. We need two people. Uh, Mr. Mr., uh, Galvano Galveo is going to start Monday and Mr. Sanchez is working now somewhere else. He needs to give them two weeks' notice. He's gonna start on St. Patrick's Day.
We can open the other guy in when he comes in, will?
Okay. I absolutely will. So I, I have attached both of their resumes. I, I think both have the skills to be able to do the job. I think both of them have the temperament and will serve us. I believe Mr. DeChristopher agrees with that.
Thank you.
If I could, uh, before you, I know you have, um, things that you'd like to ask, I'll maybe say, uh, Mr. Sanchez, um, I've spoke to both Ms. Galvo and Mr. Sanchez. Um, Mr. Sanchez has over twenty years of experience in residential maintenance. I speak about the work ethic part of it, showing up to work, very important. Working well with others, very important. Respect for coworkers and I'll leave the, uh, fourth thing to you, Mr. Chairman, and your, your, um, thing, but that, that's what we speak about, so. Uh, and I believe Mr. Sanchez will do very well with that. I also, uh, Mr. Galvo and I, I'm sorry about the confusion, I, you know, Thursday to Friday, two o'clock to three o'clock, and lots of things moving. Uh, he was a, a very, he lives right over here, right? He could walk here. He was right on Green. Glendale, yeah, yeah.
Right behind Ben Santos.
Yeah, well, so, um, you know, I, he's a talented, uh, mechanic himself and I think he will be.
We need a motion in a second, item seventeen.
So moved. So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Cal Roberts, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris. Motion is to appoint Jose Gal, Galbo of Brockton to the position of maintenance mechanic aide effective March three, twenty twenty-five at the step twenty-five, sec, at the step twenty twenty-five, step one rate of thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents per hour. And the second motion is called. Motion to appoint Richard Sanchez of Taunton to position of maintenance mechanic aide effective March seventeen, twenty twenty-five at the twenty twenty-five step one rate of thirty-three dollars and seventy-five cents per hour. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Taylor.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Now, I know you already heard this before, but I'm gonna say it again.
That's okay.
We say every time somebody moves up or promoted, this is for you then, okay? Let me thank you for wanting to work at the Brockton Housing Authority, one of the best jobs in Brockton, in my opinion. We own two thousand one hundred apartments in Brockton and administer over twenty-five hundred rental assistance voucher aid. This is not an easy job. We, the Board of Commissioners and the executive team, put our residents first. They are our number one priority. Without them, they don't need me, they don't need the board, they don't need this building, they don't need any staff. Please remember and treat them, treat our residents with respect. We also say that anyone can have a bad day. Be a little sharp, irritable, menitive, for no apparent reason. If this should happen to you, please smile and walk away. Don't argue. We can all strive to be a better person. If you can do this, you will go far in this agency. I am very glad to meet you and welcome you to the team. The board meets once a month in this room on many different subjects. Please feel free to attend any one of these items. Welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up and check I in. During COVID, we couldn't meet anybody. Everything was on TV. Welcome aboard. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It's a shame if we couldn't be excused.
I didn't want to keep you in that line. Thank you.
It's him, Mr. Carbonari here, he's, he's.
Now we're in sixteen.
Item sixteen. Brockton Housing Authority's naming right policy, Exhibit M in your packet. Mr. Tebow?
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, you had, uh, expressed the interest in, uh, boring names for the new buildings that will be doing at, uh, the Campolo complex. Um, I would just point out in the first paragraph of the policy, it is the exclusive right of this board, uh, to name a building. So it's, uh, that, that, I'll, I'll leave it there and board can take whatever action or plan they would like. I'll support them in whatever way they do.
What we were gonna do was just make a motion. Taylor, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, to remove the, to restructure the sentence, the second paragraph.
Yeah.
About opening it up to the, uh, residents.
Yes.
Can we strike that?
What you wanted was leave the first paragraph intact. On the second paragraph, strike out the first sentence and leave the rest of it intact. Is that the way we, we were talking about, Taylor?
Yeah.
Do you have a copy of this, too?
I don't, but.
Okay, I'll get it to you.
Oh, I have it in the, I have it in the board packet.
Okay.
Yeah.
So with this said, I just want to make sure we're right. We got the first sentence going, so the second paragraph will start in order for the Board of Commissioners to even consider naming a particular site?
Yes.
Do we need a motion in a second on that?
Yes, yeah. Any board action?
We need a motion in a second on item sixteen. From anybody?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Janet Trask. Motion is on the Board of Commissioners right to name the housing of properties. Keep the first paragraph as printed. On the second paragraph, eliminate the first sentence. Instead, the, which start off in order of the Board of Commissioners to even consider naming. And then go on and keep the rest of it as proposed. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Could you just read that, um, read that second paragraph the way it's gonna be?
The second paragraph, the way it's gonna be, in order for the Board of Commissioners to even consider naming a particular site, there must be a longstanding and significant connection between the mission and the work of the Brockton Housing Authority and the person or group it is honoring.
Okay.
It's a new paragraph. The naming of any structure will be in compliance with appropriate federal, state, and the local ordinances.
So we're striking that whole second paragraph?
No.
No, just the first sentence.
Oh, okay. Even though initiates. Oh, okay, so, so we're striking in order for the Board of Commissioners to even consider?
Correct.
Okay.
No, they're keeping that.
No.
They're keeping, keeping it in order for the Board of Commissioners. It's the first sentence of the second paragraph that's gone.
The, the first, it was start off, even though, have you got the, the paper?
I do, yes, yes.
Where it says, even though the Board of Commissioners initiates the process, that part is all striking out.
Okay.
It's gonna be removed and it will start with, in order of the Board of Commissioners to even consider. That'll be the new paragraph.
Okay, all right, got it.
Any other questions? Or discussion? Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Item eighteen. Do I, is that, am I on the right one?
Yes, you are, sir. Well, I believe so.
Water fire alarm replacement contract, Edwina Martin House, Exhibit O in your packets. Mr. Tebow?
So, uh, this is, in thirty-five years, I've never run into this situation. We have fire alarm systems that go down. We have fire alarm contractors that come in. We've had to put fire watches in places while they repaired, uh, these alarms. At the Edwina Martin House, that happened. And it was a substantial, uh, problem. The, uh, our vendor, our contractor went in and replaced the panel. And then the fire department came in and said, after full inspection and understanding what the replacement did, that I can't accept that. The fire department wasn't wrong. Their concerns were real. So, uh, as soon as we heard that, we contacted, uh, the Department of Capital Asset Management and said we need to do an emergency procurement. Uh, the reason that the fire department did not say we had to abandon the building was because there were two, at least two staff twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred sixty-five, uh, fifty-two weeks a year awake in the, in the house, so as a fire watch. There is an operating fire system there now. Um, but if one part goes out, they all go out. Sort of like Christmas tree, but Christmas tree light goes out and the whole string goes out. That's what would happen there now. So we have, we did the emergency procurement. And I'm explaining this to you again, because this is, uh, unique. We're giving it to you the day of the board meeting. They were open that one o'clock, correct? Um, you know, to get it, get it done. So with that, I'd like to, Mr. Barry to speak on.
Thank you, Mr. Tebow. Yes, I appreciate it again on, um, I wanna jump down to the third paragraph, because it's already been discussed. We, uh, on February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, capital improvements requested a waiver for bidding and advertising requirements under the vast general law one forty-nine for the fire line replacement of Edwina Martin. And on February twenty-fourth, the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance granted an emergency waiver. Capital Provisions has issued a set of construction documents to four prime electrical contractors and received the bids on February twenty-eighth at one o'clock. We have received the bids. Two bids came in. And the contractor, uh, Jupiter Electric is the apparent low. Jupiter at ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars. Jupiter Electric has, um, done all of our high-rises, other than, um, Solomon Tower and Manning Tower. Have also done multiple of our developments for the El, um,
Family.
Um, Billy Heights in Offlin Avenue. They're very, very, uh, well, um, schooled in fire alarm replacement. We have every confidence we're not gonna have an issue here as well. Uh, we would recommend a water contract to Jupiter Electric Incorporated of one forty-two B Lafayette Road. So very mass, in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars for the six eighty-nine dash one Edwina Martin Fire Alarm System Replacement.
Just one question, it bid with ninety-nine thousand dollars even?
Ninety-nine thousand nine hundred nine, it was never, if I put it in for that, so it is ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars.
I was gonna. Yep, I could have written three different, three different amounts.
This, again, this one here is.
Ninety, ninety, ninety-nine.
Nine, 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 nine.
Although, what I'm guessing, uh, is the, uh, lender thought that one hundred thousand dollars had some special meaning to it. It doesn't. But that's why I'm guessing they gave us this number.
This, again, this is tip, we estimated the project to be at a hundred and, I think it was a hundred and fifty-eight thousand uh, on a rough number. This was part of a multi-million dollar project that's statewide for housing authority, Brockton Housing Authority. multi-million dollar project that's statewide for Housing Authority, the Broughton Housing Authority. We had to pull it out, that's why we actually had some information to put out right away, uh, because of, again, just trying to get it done in this timeframe. But it was, it was, just came in at one and it was ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, so.
I, I, I bet you a beer, that's where, I know you don't drink, so, and he, he thought one hundred thousand meant something.
Water.
Or coffee would be nice.
Coffee, we'll get coffee.
The thing, he can put ninety-nine cents.
Yeah, well, he sacrificed that.
One other question, does it, a state-owned building?
Correct.
Do they, do they jump in on this, or?
They got, we requested permission to pull it out and go out for an individual, again, this is.
I, I think you're talking about pay?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're paying for this.
Yeah.
One hundred percent.
Okay, that makes it even better.
Well, it was, like I say, it was part of another project, but they, and it actually went and put us additional money for us to get going on it, and, and granted us to go ahead to it, so.
We need a mo- motion and a second, item eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
Carol Beecher.
All that, Carol.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Taylor Harris, seconded by Commissioner Carol Roberts. Motion is to award a contract in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars to Juniper Electric Incorporated of Southbury, Mass, for the fire system replacement project at Edwina Martin House, project six eight nine dash one, and I just wanted to add, it is the low bid. Any questions or discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
And Mister Chairman.
Yes. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. If I could, I wanna thank Mister Barry, um, I pulled him off some, uh, some work. He was doing some very important work, and I said, look, this needs to get done. Uh, and it took him a couple days of, of unexpected work, and he just bowed through it, got it done.
He's a trooper.
What a guy.
The Plymouth, he lives right near there, he drove all the way from here, twice.
I'd say we're sane.
I know, you said that long track, my daily commute.
Thank you, Mister. Thank you.
He run a boat down the canal or something.
That was my yellow house.
Can we have an outing at your house, Chris?
What's that?
If you want an outing at your house.
Well, we can rent the same room we're in.
That was a nice place, really nice. Do, I guess these numbers have changed now with that eighteen?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. So I'm the one who did the clerical work on this, so this is my mistake, that I didn't follow it all the way down. It should be nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one.
Yeah, so nineteen is old business, if there's any old business? Because we just did eighteen, was that, uh, fire alarm? Any old business?
Nope.
Hearing none. News, I have two items on, on the new business. One of them is, uh, uh, we have a meeting in April, which is April twenty-fourth. What I was gonna do was try and move it, just in case it doesn't get extended. But I'm going away on vacation that week, and I'm gonna come in on Zoom, but I'm not sure if Zoom was gonna be in place at that time, okay? So I'm trying to move it to either the seventeenth, the week before, or the thirtieth was the week after.
Mr. Chairman, could we do it on the fifteenth? Uh, we're supposed to have some things breaking with the Campello, um.
Yeah, fifteenth is forever.
Tax Day.
Oh, you would have to remind me. I gotta pay everything this year, Beverly Land State.
Always fun.
Is fifteenth okay with everybody?
Uh, yeah, I'll mark it down now, so it's gonna be April fifteenth.
Instead of the twenty-fourth.
Okay, and it's gonna be at two or three?
How's it for you, Taylor? What time?
Uh, three's probably better.
Three o'clock?
Well, actually, um, either one, two could be, two could be fine, I can make it work.
No, what, whatever is fine.
We can bend with you, Taylor, whatever you want.
Um, ba, 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 ba.
Take your time.
Let's say.
Big decision.
I know, uh, let's say two.
Just so everybody knows, Tom says, well, if, if it gets changed, that March fourth is gonna be extended, we can have it on the twenty-fourth if you want.
Uh, yes, I was going to ask that we change it to the twenty-third, um, but let's leave it at the fifteenth right now, and, uh, we'll, we're, again, I, there are a bunch of things that are supposed to happen at the very beginning of, uh.
You mean, no matter what, it will be the fifteenth?
Well, I, I would leave it there for now, and then if anything comes up, I'll, I'll contact you and let you know. We, we do have, uh, you know, some, um, things to, to get our closing done. There's gonna be things that go through the board, big things, you know, uh, this RFP would be a, uh, you know, a forty million dollar contract.
Okay. So we're all set for the, the April fifteenth on, at two o'clock?
Two o'clock. Got it.
And the other thing I wanted to bring up is the, the naming of the Tony De Vega House. And the, I can't remember her last name, Carol, I know where it is in Robin.
No, no, uh, Sandy Bowers?
No.
Oh, the, the.
The smoking thing there? We, I know we don't smoke. Rosemary Foster. I know we can't, we don't do smoking anymore, but even with a coffee carousel, what do you call those things, the row thing?
Gazeebo.
Debo.
Gazeebo.
It would.
It depends on how far it's away from the building.
Well, then we're gonna put it in the backyard, right, right on the back door. I mean, as long as people could smoke there if they wanted to.
When, once it's twenty-five feet, yeah, I mean, it, the only, uh, that's up to the lessons. I, I know we, we have them, uh, in, in different places that I've managed, and, uh, you know, the non-smokers get mad that it's taken over by the smokers at the time, but that, that's.
Yeah.
Well, that's what, you know, you can make it a coffee room or a soda room, but.
It's, it's usually an open-air thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But I know we voted on it once before, but nothing ever got done. Just the other day, I seen this picture of Tony De Vega down on your, on the, the office.
Yeah.
It's, it'd be perfect. Put the picture in there, put the name up there. And I know we, we had, one time we were gonna do Sandy Bowers, we're gonna wait.
Sandy Bowers was done.
No, I know it was done, we were gonna wait for her. She was, wasn't, well, we were gonna wait for her, and now she's passed away.
I, I did look that up, uh, that the Vega, uh, building was named by this board, um, in two thousand nine. And then it, you know, Mister Serge, uh, retired in two thousand thirteen. What happened in between that, I don't know. But yes, we have the large picture, we can do it, yeah, remember our, um.
That's the building behind Belia Towers?
Yeah.
Uh, Taylor and Janet.
The priest, Father Brian, I knew him as, um, was very good friends with him, and he was gonna come and speak. And Father Brian passed away as a young man.
Yeah, and he was so young.
Yeah, um, and, you know, so, but it is something, yeah, we have the Tony De Vega, I'd love to get the photo up, the, and, and, and hung there, we can do it, I, I, I know his, uh.
I'm thinking of his name on the building when you're driving.
We do those signs, you know, like we do with Sandy Bowers?
Yeah.
That's, I think, what we did for Paul Burns, we did a, a rock, with a plaque that will outlive him.
Yeah, they'll pick the rocket, fall through.
No, I don't know, this, this is a huge rock, you have to have a back-end motor.
But anyway, do you need a motion and a vote on that?
I do not, no, no, both things are done, I'll take your instruction and we'll work. I have some stuff that we did for Tony De Vega, I have some stuff that we did for Rosemary Foster. I don't know why the folk Rosemary Foster stuff stopped. I do know what happened, uh, to the Vega stuff, but.
It might have been the smoking part.
No, no, on the De Vega thing, Richard wanted to, um, have, you know, this big elaborate ceremony, it was never coming together, so he's always postponing it. Um, and then there might have been Sandy who was sick. And then on Rosemary Foster, I don't know what happened to that, I do have some stuff, remember working with Frank, uh, Hines on it.
Is smoking still an issue at all?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, sore, sore subject.
I quit smoking over ten years ago.
No, I know, I know you did. But I just, I just wondered in general if it's really, uh, a mute issue now, but it's not, huh?
Yeah, it, it's not, uh.
It's not as big as it used to be.
Not as big as it used to be, uh, a lot of the smokers have passed away. Uh, and then, um, you know, it, a number of people who live next door to smokers, um, have come, you know, they say, okay, I'm, I'm not gonna complain about it, which is not right, but that's what they decided, so.
They do.
And, and marijuana is, uh, probably one of the bigger, bigger issues, because, you know, if they smoke marijuana, everybody on the four floors around them know.
Like driving down the street, if there's somebody within three cars of you who's smoking, you can tell.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you get the one, oh, no, I wanna smoke it in my apartment, but I'll go on the balcony.
This will, this will be an age thing, I believe, Commissioner Trask, because people, you know, younger people are smoking at the late rates they were back in the sixties.
It's dangerous now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's dangerous. They get it from their doctor's, glaucoma, whatever.
Oh, but the marijuana.
Yeah, the marijuana.
Well, if you were living in the sixties, you're now, uh, you know, when you're seventies now, anyway, so.
Yeah.
Tom, on the, uh, Tony De Vega and. That could be done the same day, don't have to be. Doesn't have to be two separate ceremonies.
Yeah.
It don't have to be a large one, does it?
Yeah, no, no, that, you're absolutely right, um, they were both friendly, and with each other, too.
Yeah. Didn't she take over, I think, Tony?
Yes, she did.
Item twenty-one, we need a motion and a second. By anybody that's.
Motion to adjourn, yep.
Go ahead, give to Janet.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Janet Trask, seconded by Commissioner Taylor Harris, and the motion is to adjourn. Don't leave yet. Doing a roll call, Mr. Tebow?
Commissioner Trask.
Yes.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Mister Chairman.
Yes, meeting adjourned.